Cheers.
I wish I'd ran my.
Airways connect.
Six o'clock.
I'm sorry.
Hell is meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance to the flag and hearing of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to, once again, ask people to keep our first responders, police officers, and anyone else affected by the pandemic in our thoughts. We'll start with open forum. Bill?
Right. Here's, I got quite a few items. Here's my village top is report dealing with village subject. That's the first one. In late May, while walking on North Lions Avenue, one resident of that street informed me about one dead bird on North Lions Avenue, just northeast Menance Public Library entrance, by which I self said deserved. So I wrote, reported the problem to clerk Don Hannah here from the Menance Police Department. A couple of days later, I found out that one dead bird was removed from North Lions Avenue, and I wish to thank our public work guys for doing their duty. Good job. Second, in late May, while driving on Cornell Drive and Brookside Avenue, I observed two vehicles parking on both village streets next to fire hydrants, so I reported the problem to Menance Police Department shortly. And several hours later, I returned to Cornell Drive and Brookside Avenue. I observed that two vehicles were no longer parking on both village streets next to fire hydrants. If Menance Police gave tickets to both vehicles, I'd like to thank the Menance Police for doing their job to enforce laws, forbidding vehicles from parking next to any fire hydrants. Well done. Now, during last week, late July, I saw right, I saw one right three color traffic light signal system on Broadway and Brookside Avenue junction. It's not working. You know, red, yellow, and green lights were not lighted up. So I reported the Menance Police, you know, shortly. Well, this right three color traffic light signal system was finally fixed, and I wish to thank the state DOT crew for fixing the right three colored traffic light signal system. Good job. Fourth one. While driving on Broadway, I've noticed and observed one black old-fashioned street light marker on West Side of Broadway has one lamp missing. Plus, there's no yellow number pulsing on it on the black old-fashioned street light marker, which is supposed to be number one. So I reported the problem to the Menance Police shortly. So I hope that the black old-fashioned street light marker gets a new lamp plus post one yellow number one on it. Right, the fifth one. While walking or driving on Railroad Avenue and Menance Road, I see and observe one steel high-voltage tower to walk the D and H railroad track just north of Menance Road railroad crossing and one concession stand store building in Menance Olympic baseball section. It's largely being covered with vines. So I reported this problem to the Menance Police shortly. I know the village has got very little control over the steel high voltage, which is true, but something needs to be done about. I'd like the National Grid utility guys remove the vines from this one steel high voltage house and walk the D and H railroad track when they're able to do so. And number six. Now, during the sixth June second twenty twenty-two meeting, Zoo zoning board appeals, one of the topics discussed was vertical verse arising communication company had requested that the zoning board appeals approve its request to construct one cellphone tower at three hundred eighty one Broadway here in Menance Farmer Region Market located. And I do support the proposed cellphone tower in lower Menance for several reasons. And I spoke to, during the meeting, I had spoke to the zoning board, board appeals members to approve the arising communication request to construct one new cellphone tower. And well, and I, and well, and the board did approve of the cellphone tower, phone tower at the location lower Menance just mentioned, which I'm delighted with, and I'd like to thank the zoning board appeals member for approval of one cellphone tower. And I'm delighted. Now, on June eighth, twenty twenty-two, just in Menance Farmers Region Market, I found out that that art deco style building, number eight, will be turned into some warehouses door building. I don't know what it's going to be, but it'll be turned into some warehouse and door building. I'm glad to hear about. Plus, I've been informed that the Board of Directors for Farmers Market Organization are studying my proposals to upgrade and modernize Menance Farmers Market Region Market. And I found out that the faucets have been got new ones for the men's room, the sinks. And I assume that the same thing's been done for the women's room. They got new faucets. Looks like I'm getting some things done already. So one more thing, the eighth and last one. Now, on the east side of North Lions Avenue, while I was walking on that street last night, there's one brown bag, which is storing yard waste, is standing next to one fire hydrant. This is located on eleven Greens, Light Greens House property, and I've already reported this problem to the Menance Police shortly, so I hope that bag gets removed from the fire hydrant near. Thank you for letting me speak, and I hope you appreciate what I have said.
Yes, we certainly do. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Two things. The estimated moving year on the stuff, like clockwork.
Yeah.
Thirty-two minutes.
Wow, good.
Guy was very courteous. It was tough. My courage.
I said, don't worry about it. The other thing is, has anything happened with the idea of having a permit, your board permit?
Yes, we sent it to Eric Johnson. I want to say chasing, but it's not chasing. And he said, thank you for reminding me because he's supposed to get back to me with comments. So he's had a couple of weeks, so I think that should be.
He's on vacation.
Well, no, but, you know, so after that, I think it's going to come down to, like, I had made amendments to basically, you know, I took the model you gave for Albany County to adapt it to us. I asked him to look at it to see if there's anything that would not apply to us overall. And then, secondly, I think we're going to have to look at what the fees are going to be.
That's up to you.
Yeah, exactly. So, and I think that's going to be.
Who's not enforce that?
It's, it's not a matter of enforcement. They already have to notify, you know, Don and Public Works when they're going to do any digging. So at that point, you know, you give them the application, they completed, charge the fee.
This just gives you a little.
Yep, that's all. So it's not, it's not an enforcement that I, I didn't see it that way anyway. It's basically just a compliance.
Sometimes these contractors hire outside, come in, and they have no idea. You know, where's the, where's Menance? They show up and they start doing their stuff. They have no idea what's going on.
Well, still, if they're going to, somebody's going to be digging, BPW, for the most part, is going to be the ones that got a spot. I'm doing it, you know? And I gotta say, hey, what are you doing without having spoken to anybody? So, you know, I wouldn't call that enforcement. I would just, you know. Hey, here's the paperwork. See you, see you later.
All money is just a tool.
Yeah. Thank you for the reminder, though.
And I'll, I did want to follow up on something that you had said, but I'll wait till, till later. I wanted to ask about the progress of the installation of the meters. We'll do that part later. Anybody else? Okay, then we're going to move before we even, before we approve the minutes from the last meeting. I want to move number four up because I know that Dave has some places to go. So the discussion regarding the use of Albany County's fire engine.
Yep, so the truck committee, which is myself, Mike Stewart, and John Dudley, met with Megan Tim. And Albany County has a fire engine that they use for training slash borrowing purposes, in case anybody is really in a pinch with apparatus or anything like that. They've allowed us to use it. Bob Dignome kind of cleared it insurance-wise. We wouldn't have to cover any of the insurance or anything like that. It's kind of their way of getting their name out. All they want from us is really just a letter of thank you, and then if we have any extra tools that we can surplus for the truck. It's going to be used, if approved, while the rescue goes out for an extended period of time to see how much it would cost to kind of get it back up to snuff. There are some electrical issues, the pump leaks, things that shouldn't.
So they're not going to actually do, they're just going to look at what the cost would be.
Correct, we're just getting prices on everything. It's nineteen ninety-nine. So it's, it's up there in age.
For rescues?
For engine rescues, yeah. Typically, they're about twenty years worth of wear and tear, and that's been essentially the first due piece for twenty-something years, probably since two thousand fifteen or sixteen, when we got the truck. And the majority of calls in Menance are still between seven eighty-seven.
Is this the first potential repair for that vehicle?
I'm not. Depending on the price, potentially, but I think, Don, you might, there's been some money put into that.
We replaced, the biggest problem we had with it when we first bought it, there wasn't enough seam lighting and stuff. We increased, we changed all the lighting from strobes and everything else to LED. We upgraded all the lighting and we did, there was some pump work doing to, you know, just, we have it serviced every year, and they, they found one impeller that was bad once, so they replaced the impeller. But it's been, it's been used, you know.
So this is to explore whether it's worth investing more money in?
Correct. Yeah. So while that's out, all we have to do is essentially pay for the fuel for the cream-colored truck that's downstairs. And I talked with the Albany County Fire Coordinator, Chief Paris, and he's allowing us to use it for as long as we need it. So I'm just looking for the board's approval so we can start training on that and then get the rescue out. We're going to send it to a couple of different service centers just to get a, see price-wise where it's at for.
Yeah, I saw the email from Bob saying, you know, everything was called aesthetic as far as the insurance. So you definitely have my, my support on that. Do you have the information on who exactly we should send the thank you note to or thank you?
I will get that.
Okay.
I would assume we could probably just send it to the Albany County Fire Coordinator.
Okay.
Jerry Paris, I can get you his email, and if he'd like it sent to anything else, I can make sure to forward that to you guys. We can get a letter written up.
Excellent.
Second. All in favor? Okay, then.
We've got two new members from the department, Carissa Stoll and Connor Gordon, a few more members that have kind of transferred over from Skylar Heights. They've both cleared the required background checks from Albany County and from the park itself. So we're just looking for those two members to be approved.
And I don't necessarily have any objections, but, you know, I'd just be interested in seeing, you often send us some information about them, just, you know, so we have.
Kind of like who they are.
Yeah. Yeah, if you want to email that to us, but I, I would have no objections.
I can give you a quick little rundown. Carissa Stoll is, she's the past president of the Skylar Heights Fire Company. She's really done a lot for that company as a whole. She's been a firefighter for probably five or six years. And then Connor Gordon is a firefighter slash EMT. He's aspiring to be an anesthesiologist. And is incredibly smart, probably too smart for us, but.
It'll be nice to have, have that expertise on the.
Yeah, we've.
Is he pretty mad? Is he pretty mad or what?
I think so. Yeah, I think he just passed one of his degrees, and now he's working towards a couple of others.
So moved. All in favor?
Hi.
And then the final thing I have is for approval from the board to use the ladder truck for bucket rides on community. Pretty straightforward. Kids love going up and down the buckets, sometimes adults. They'll freak out in a bucket.
All in favor? Hi. Be good.
We're all set. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Keep us posted on the stuff for the rescue truck.
Yeah, absolutely. As soon as we start getting prices, I'll definitely let Megan Tim know because they're who we met with first and that.
And they'll, they'll convey it to the board, I'm sure.
Perfect.
Thanks, Dave. Have a great one.
You too.
It wasn't on the agenda, but we need a motion to accept the minutes of the July eighteenth, twenty twenty board meeting. All in favor?
Hi.
Epstein? Real carried, yep.
One second. I forgot to. Warren number five, general, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventeen cents.
I'm sorry, Don, could you repeat that again?
One, six, eight, four, sixty-three, seventeen. Water, thirty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. Sewer, four thousand, four hundred and one dollars and eighty-eight cents, totaling two hundred and five thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. Payroll number five, one hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars, correction, one hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents.
So moved. All in favor?
Hi.
Bill is, or the treasurer is requesting permission to amend the street maintenance for the pickup that we purchased in the last board meeting for fifty thousand dollars and permission to transfer fifty thousand dollars from vehicle savings account into that account.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Hi.
And he needs permission to amend the account for fire department equipment for miscellaneous to allow for the purchase of the personal protective equipment for twenty, and from their budget and to transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from the contingency budget that the board approved at the last board meeting.
Was this for the?
Turnout.
I'll make a motion. All in favor?
All right. You can do your thing now.
Local law number three of twenty twenty-two, at the end of the meeting, I'll make a motion that we accept this, but it, in a nutshell, the open meetings law, New York State Open Meetings Law was amended back in April to allow for teleconferencing and remote meetings after the governor's executive order expires with a couple of caveats. So, you know, I'm going to read through it and then explain what things mean, just so people understand it. So basically, local, the authorities, local municipalities can, can hold meetings remotely or participate remotely in extenuating circumstances if the municipality has a local law on record that is, that is to that extent. So it has to be consistent with the new open meetings law. So the Board of Trustees of the Village of Menance, County of Albany, is hereby authorized to utilize video conference software for regular bimonthly meetings, special meetings, public hearings, committee meetings, zoning board of appeals meetings, workshops, and any other public meetings as prescribed by the Public Officers' Law, section one oh three dash A, subject to the following. First of all, a quorum of the members of the board must be physically present at the meeting in one or more locations at which members of the public may attend the meeting. So that would mean three members here, if the meeting's being held here.
Can I ask one question?
Of course.
So if, if, say, I was ill, but I still, it was an important meeting that I still wanted to be able to vote, I could conference in and still have the ability to vote?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And, and an additional person can as well. So like, let's say you and I were both sick then, but we wanted to teleconference in. It would be like we were present. We would have full voting capability.
Okay, all right, because I know it used to, but, you know, it has been to this point that you had to be physically present.
Yeah, or the way it was before, members of the public would have to be able to watch from your location. So if you were at home, if you were in the hospital, they would physically have to be able to be present where you were. This case eliminates that. It just, the public has to be able to be where a quorum of the board exists.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So if members of the board are physically present at the meeting locations at which the public can attend in person, unless the member of the board is unable to be physically present due to extraordinary circumstances. And extraordinary circumstances is defined to include, but not limited to, any disability or illness, caregiver responsibilities, or any significant or unexpected factor or event that precludes the board member's physical attendance at such meeting. So NICOM, and I interpret this to mean that you, you could use a sick day for that. So in any situation in which you could use a sick day, you're sick, your kid is sick, you're, someone gets injured in your family, and you have to tend to them. Any of that would, or anything, anything in which you could use a sick day, for which you could use a sick day. Extraordinary circumstances must be certified by email or other written means to the presiding officer for that meeting, as well as the clerk of the meeting, by the member of the board in accordance with the Village of Menance video conferencing policies and procedures. A simple email, dear Don and Meg, I am unable to be at this due to illness. You don't have to go, go into it, but that's, that's as far as that goes. You don't, you don't have to say I have COVID or anything. Then, except in the case of executive sessions conducted pursuant to the Public Officers' Law one oh five, members of the board must be able to be heard, seen, and identified while the meeting is being conducted, including but not limited to any motions, proposals, resolutions, and any other matter formally discussed or voted upon. This is new, so the cameras must be on. You must be, you must unmute in order to, to vote any of those, all of that. But it's while those are taking place. So for example, if we have a, there's a presentation by somebody else, if Ryan's giving a presentation, we can be on mute. If you have to turn your camera off to go to the bathroom, in another room, that's fine. But while motions or official business is being conducted, you must be on camera and be able to unmute in order to speak. Minutes of the meeting involving video conferencing must include which of any members of the board participated using video conferencing technologies. That could, that could be literally where you have to present when you look at the draft minutes, present, and it could be in parentheses. It could be a different section, just has to be noted in asterisk. Such minutes must be made available to the public pursuant to Public Officers' Law, section one oh six, which we do. Any meetings that use video conferencing must be recorded, and such recordings must be posted to or linked to the Village of Menance website within five business days of the meeting. Recordings must remain available for a minimum of five years thereafter, and recordings must be transcribed upon request. They don't have to be transcribed immediately, but upon request. Public notice for any meetings involving video conferencing must inform the public that video conferencing will be used, where members of the public can view and or participate in such meeting via video conference, and where required documents and records will be posted or available. And identify the physical location or locations where members of the board will be physically present at the meeting and where members of the public can attend the meeting in person. So, you know, again, it could be multiple locations for a number of reasons. Maybe two board members, this is just a scenario, two board members are sick, and one of them has a childcare issue. They can't find a babysitter. So now you only have two members at Village Hall, and one member would, would open their home up to, to people doing that, which is how things were before. So that, so where the public could go to that board member's house. I'm not saying whether that's a good or bad idea, but that's just how the open meetings law reads. I just want to note that we continue, it's important to continue to use video conferencing software, even when all, all of the board members are here, because we will continue to notice it that way. If we stop using video conferencing, we stop using Google Meet for any number of reasons, and then somebody becomes sick the day of, the day before, we wouldn't have time to notice meetings. That requires a seventy-two hour notice. So we, it's important that we keep doing that. Otherwise, what NICOM had suggested, if we didn't do that, board members would have to certify at least seventy-two hours in advance that they wouldn't be able to go there. People get sick within the seventy-two hour window, so that wouldn't, so this helps us. We are already ahead of the game for that. Members of the public are able to view the video broadcast of any meetings using video conferencing simultaneously when the meeting is conducted. Additionally, at meetings where public comment or participation is authorized by the board, members of the public are able to participate in the proceedings using video conference technologies in real time and with the same opportunities for public participation or testimony as in-person participation or testimony. So basically, we're going to do that, and members are remote, they're on Brookside, they're in California for any number of reasons. They should be able to participate in open forum via Google Meet. The board may conduct, conduct meetings entirely by video conference with no in-person required, provided that a state of emergency is declared by the governor of the state of New York pursuant to Executive Law, section twenty-eight, or a local state of emergency is declared by the mayor of the Village of Menance pursuant to Executive Law, section twenty-four, and the presiding officer of the board determines that the circumstances necessitating the emergency declaration would affect or impair the ability of the public body to hold an in-person meeting. Major snowstorm, a blizzard, the mayor or whoever the presiding officer is at that point, if they declare a state of emergency, we could still hold the meeting, especially if there's something that needs to be conducted, that, rather than in the past, sometimes we put it off a week. Whenever the board invokes the emergency exception as defined in paragraph seven and takes action at such meeting without allowing members of the public to be physically present, the board must acknowledge the previous meetings, meeting or meetings, and summarize any action or actions taken, including but not limited to motions and resolutions, including the vote breakdown at the next immediate meeting where the public is allowed to attend. The board must produce minutes of such emergency meetings pursuant to the requirement of Public Officers' Law, section one oh six. That would have been helpful as soon as things shut down for the pandemic in March of twenty twenty, but we weren't yet using Google Meet for the general public. We had our first one through phone conference. That's where that would be helpful. So you could, in an emergency, conduct a meeting, you would just have to rehash everything out at the next open meeting. And then obviously, severability, if a court determines that any clause, sentence, or paragraph subdivision are part of this local law or the application thereof to any person, firm, or corporation, or circumstances invalid or unconstitutional, the court's order or judgment shall not affect, impair, or invalidate the remainder of this local law, but shall be confined in its operation to the clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or part of this local law or in its application to the person, individual, firm, or corporation, or circumstance directly involved in the controversy in which such judgment or order shall be rendered. And this would become effective immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. So I would like to move to make a resolution that we have a public hearing for this. Do we want to set it for the?
August eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
Or fifteenth.
Fourteenth, right?
Fifteenth, fifteenth, I'm sorry, my mistake. Fifteenth.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any questions? Thank you, thank you. This is all very new. I already have requests from other municipalities for where we're, how I'm drafting this, so there isn't, there isn't draft language from NICOM yet. So I apologize for taking so long. We just had a lot of back and forth.
Just to also let you know, all of the previous recorded meetings are up on the website.
Oh, good.
And they're at, if you go to the, the minutes, they're right with the minutes. So from the first time we've done it, all, all the recorded, saved recordings are there. And that's how we're going to do it, so it'll be, and when we do the, like, when we post the agenda, all the every, like, everything that was here is also up there. You know, anything, any paperwork that has to go with it has also been posted.
So really, we're, we're already doing a lot of the legal part of it, the open, open meeting part of it. Really, the only thing that changes, it allows us to be flexible if someone has an extenuating circumstance. So that's good. So that's good, or if we have a state of emergency here. We've already operated under the governor's one, but like if we have one, then it gives us that flexibility. Good, thank you. So the discussion regarding the plow for the new pickup truck?
When we ordered the pickup truck, the wrong plow was quoted. Mike wanted a nine-foot V plow like he has with the other truck and they put a six-foot straight plow. The price difference is $783.
So it's like twice the cost of what?
It's like, no, it's a plow itself, I don't have the.
No, it was like, it was like $7,000.
It was a $7,000, it was just, it's additional $783.
To be honest with you, I thought it would be a lot more than that. Yeah, for the, because the V actually can split.
It can split and play go, it can do, it can do more with it and.
I thought it was a bargain.
Could be bigger piles of V.
Yeah.
Split the pile, then yeah.
So I need someone.
What are we going to do with the seven-foot one?
No, they're just not going to order it. They didn't, they, it's still, it's not, it was, they're going to switch the, for that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion regarding upgrading the SCADA system for the water department?
Just so everybody's aware of it, the SCADA system is what runs the water pumps and all the, how they can remotely control it so that people have to be there 24 hours a day. The system that we have now is, I believe, over 20 years old, maybe it was around there somewhere. But the problem is, is that with all the increasing security measures we put in there, the old system will not work with Windows 10, so we can't, so somebody could hack into the system and really, so we need to increase, upgrade the system to the newer one. The price for the new one is $29,800. Originally was going to be a lot more than that, but then after we tweaked what we actually need, what we don't need, it came down to this price.
Is this, it's like a state contract?
It's a state contract, yeah.
And this comes out of the water fund, correct?
Because that has to come out of the water fund. And I talked to Bill and Bill says, he feels all in favor of it because he says, well, because he had, you know, it has to be done, it's not, because we're, when the, the health department comes in, looks at their system and says that, you know, we're not protected, we're going to get in trouble for that too.
And Smith Controls is the best lender for this?
They're the ones that, yes, they're the ones that we're currently using and they, Eric has looked at this and he didn't have any problems with it also.
Second, all in favor? Okay, next up is Tim leading a discussion regarding the state's Down Counter Revitalization Initiative or the way forward?
Yes, thank you. So there is a, it's, August 10th is just the deadline for the letter of intent. So what I want to ask is that, just to move forward on the letter of intent and try to get this put together, and it's not very involved to be perfectly honest, you just need a short description. I'll pull a lot of information from the comprehensive plan to say what kind of things we're looking at doing. It actually says within this document that says, "That can change. You're not just stuck with what you put in the letter of intent. Should the scope changes because, you know, we're going to have to take some community input."
Yep.
And you might get some things that we hadn't thought about, you know, to be involved. So I think it's very open-ended, it gives us a better opportunity, plus it allows us to go on to some training units that they have prepared. It's like every Thursday or so on between now and the application deadline is actually September 23rd, which sounds like it's a long way off, but it's still a push because this thing is going to be very involved.
Yes.
So all I'm asking is the board's support to at least at this point submit the application, or excuse me, the letter of intent to file the application. Now, when I looked at it, the New York Fuller program would actually probably be the better fit for us. The DRI actually only takes one $10 million grant for the region. The New York Ford is actually designed for smaller communities and there's actually up to three grants, one four and a half billion and two two and a half billions if they don't, you know, find, you know, like they may, they could just do one, if they only get one application, they'll get all the money.
Yeah.
But if they should get a couple of good smaller applications, if you'd be spread out, I would certainly hope we get, even if we get one of the smaller units of two and a half million would do us a good, a good deal of help. But the second part of this is that they do between the time that you do your letter of intent and do the application, that you hold a public forum, which can include having some outreach at a public function, which could be, and I was thinking, at the park during the picnic and have a booth and just take information from people and get their input. So at least that, and possibly if we have the opportunity to do maybe one at one of our meetings and just have it open, an open hearing prior to the board meeting.
Absolutely.
Takes some input.
Yeah.
And we don't have to set a date for it now, but I'd like permission to, you know, try to set up a booth for the picnic, you know, and see if we can gather some input on that.
Absolutely, and I'm thinking, you know, I like everything that I heard, maybe we could do that, like the first meeting in September, we could do the forum, the informal open forum before the meeting.
Right, right.
The Tuesday after Labor Day.
Right.
Yeah, and I'm in full favor of that and I, as I said, I was very happy when I saw that, your email, something that I wanted to do since NICOM a year ago. But it's over, it's a daunting task, but certainly.
Yeah, and I'll admit, I'm looking at it going, there's going to be a lot here.
Yeah.
And I'm going to have to, you know, really, you know, push to try to get this done and I'm hopefully going to get some input from some other people as well.
Do you want to draft a letter of intent, your letter of intent?
Yeah.
Share it with the board?
Oh, absolutely, I would submit it without, without sharing with everybody.
Absolutely, and we can also enlist the help of Labella in doing this because they do, they do a lot of this. So, and they helped Glens Falls to get theirs.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know that, that's great.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, I think we should, and anyone who can help us with that?
And when I think about it, I mean, you know, if we're looking at DRI, if Albany or Cohoes or Warfleet, you know, one of the cities within the county, put an application and they stand a lot better chance for a project than we do.
Yeah.
To do New York Forward, which is for the small communities, and we've already done our comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
The information is there, the ideas are kind of, you know, out there already. You know, what we'd like to do.
Yeah.
The rest is basically just try to, you know, put it together for them and hopefully they, you know, they like what they're seeing and we can get it done.
Absolutely, and that's, and that's what they want. I mean, it's not just about the cities, they want all the municipalities to be successful and bring people in and do, make some improvements, so.
The interesting thing is, I read through it, there's a lot of the things that they said they're looking for, that they want units to do. We have already done some of these things, we've done water infrastructure, we've done, you know, our roads, we've done street skating, we've already worked on things that we've taken care of ourselves.
Yeah.
You know, as well as, you know, the, you know, the properties that are already getting, you know, some upgrades as we speak, and these things that are getting worked on, so.
And this could allow.
Not to mention the comprehensive plan itself.
Right, right, and this could allow us to, you know, make some major changes now rather than necessarily just, you know.
The zoning, the zoning changes, et cetera, that's all, you know, we're basically ready to move forward.
Implement, absolutely.
So they said, and they, the one thing they said, they want to be, they want the municipality to be ready to move forward on these things, they said, once they approve an application, they start, they give the communities help in the planning stage, and we'll have our own community planning group that we'll put together. It'll start from January to July, and they want projects to be up and running within two years.
Yes, yeah, that's what, we had breakfast with the mayor of Glens Falls at NICOM and he was saying that, he says, yeah, they wanted us to be ready right away to do that. So that starts another clock, which is good, but it's a whirlwind.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, that's where, that's where Labella would be very helpful in helping to coordinate that.
No pressure.
Right.
No pressure, no pressure.
Exactly, no, it's like, it's something that, I'm excited about it, but it also makes you sweat a little bit, like, oh my God, what am I getting into? But does anyone want to?
We have to make a motion, right?
Yeah, a motion to allow the.
Well, you're in motion, right?
Or you may.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And we're, we're all behind, Tim, we're all working.
Well, I appreciate everybody being on the same page.
Yeah, I agree too.
Thank you, Paul.
You will.
Let's see, yeah, what else can we?
Just a reminder, the Village picnic and Community Night's going to be August 24th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. and with a movie to follow. And a follow-up on the last meeting, speed bumps have been installed on Kingston Street, and that's all I got.
Let's see, a couple of, a couple of things, a couple of questions. How is the meter installation going?
We've got, did she say, 200 and something been installed already? And it's, they're going a lot quicker, in a lot quicker than they thought.
Are they doing neighborhood by neighborhood because I don't.
Be by appointment. You have to make an appointment, there's a, everybody was mailed a card and they have to.
Uh-oh.
But.
If you're not sure, you can call Nicole and Nicole can set up an appointment for you.
Then they filled up, which is good.
How long ago did they mail the cards?
The company mailed them out.
Couple of weeks.
Late May. Late May.
Good grief, how did I not see that?
Green, bright green.
If you got a follow-up on two, that's yellow or orange.
Okay.
If it makes you feel any better, they're booked up anyway, so that's all good.
I'll call the call.
That's no problem. What was I going to say? Then, any updates on the high-service reservoir?
That was repaired and it's still, his backyard is still wet. So not sure, Mike's.
Unbelievable.
Mike is ready to.
Unbelievable.
Pull it in, but.
Is it possible that just saturated ground and that it's got to drain off?
I thought about that, but Mike and I talked about, and Brian and I talked about that today, that with all this hot, this heat and lacquer rain, you would think it would have dried right up.
If you drive by, if you drive by the Loudonwood East Complex and look at their pond, it has to be down like three feet.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's got to be something else leaking in there because otherwise it would be definitely dry.
Right, so what, what's the next step? I assume, I assume nobody from Labella, Eric isn't on?
Eric's on vacation, but Lawrence went up there, they had the diver in there, they went, they've checked, they've done, we've had thrown out, come in and.
Dye test and they.
They did dye testing, they've done.
I was there when they repaired the valve and.
They, you know, the valve was actually working.
Yeah, the valve was actually working, but they found a leak towards the front that they tried to repair. I mean, it's really makes sense.
Evaporation is a big part of this. You have an area considerable, what's happening here, you're going to lose as much as inch of water a day. If there's no way to fill it back up.
Yeah.
But evaporation is a consistent part of it.
The problem is this guy's yard is like saturated, so that's why we're.
The problem is called the neighbor's house that's right behind where the high-service reservoir is, right by his fence, it's pooling water. In the wintertime, it's.
There's a leak.
It's, well, we thought we fixed the leak.
The concrete?
Yes.
How old is it?
50 years.
16?
50, 60, I don't know, I'm not, I.
What happens to concrete that's continually submerged is that your silica alkaloid, alkaloid reaction takes place and deteriorates slowly. You can't see it, but it allows seepage to occur and you can't detect it at all until it's filled, like this is a warehouse.
So what, so what do they do? Do they, can they drain it and seal it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's probably the only answer, because otherwise seepage is going to continue, probably going to get worse.
Yeah. Yeah, because not to mention, this is all on metered water that's being lost.
They, they didn't say anything about sealing it, they just did.
Let's be honest.
The problem, the problem from what I understand is that the back chamber is something like 700,000 gallons of water. They would have to eliminate the majority of the service for that service because the two front chambers each are like 200, 300,000 gallons, times two. So you'd have to, and the valves that connect them all are old.
Right.
So you have to, so Mike is afraid if he cranks one valve to shut the back chamber down, he doesn't know if he could ever reopen it.
Because, oh, don't work those valves. You have to see a problem in Troy when it tries to be there.
Right.
You crank it, bang.
Right, so, so the problem is.
So they may have to replace the valves first. That, you can do that, right?
I don't even know, but we need, not a personal fault, but we need an engineer to figure this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you mean, we can't figure that out?
I never done that, Don.
You have to shut the water off to that chamber, slather it with, you know, Flex Seal or one of those other, you know.
Commercial, right?
The blocks that they're going to dig.
Exactly, right?
Oh, I hope it's a little more complicated than that.
Right, otherwise, otherwise we could have a board workday and.
So anyway, and then, and then refill 720,000 gallons. So where do you dump all that water to?
Well, the problem is going to be is then the people up in the, all the, everybody gets fed from that, you're not going to, they're not going to have any water.
The question is for how long though? You know, we're talking hours or days?
You empty one natural flow, just continue service, and it shuts down. You don't have to dump the water.
Well, the problem from what I understand is that once you reach 50% level, then all the sediment gets kicked up.
Yes.
They're going to have to clean that out anyway in the whole process, I'm sure.
It's got to go.
Yeah.
You know, what do you do with it?
Right.
I don't know, so anyway.
What happens is, we haven't had significant maintenance in the last 60 years.
Correct, that's the problem.
Well, you're paying $2,020 per season for 1,500 work.
Yeah, yeah, and so, I don't know, it might be worth even exploring a new, a new tank system.
New tank, what, right, if, if that were a new development now, what would they put in there?
No, they'd tank.
It'd be up in the air.
Up in the air.
Yeah.
Yeah, gravity said.
Last time we talked about this was 10 years ago. No tank, dump my backyard.
Yeah.
Because you'll see it forever, or you'll get your water on colony.
Well.
Colony doesn't have enough pressure.
That's the biggest problem, because of pressure.
Colony doesn't have enough pressure.
Well, I'd asked that question before too, that is, we have our old emergency interconnect and apparently that is obsolete now.
Well, yeah, it was, because of water or leak.
Well, that one's been upgraded.
Huh?
That's been upgraded.
You want behind dozens?
Yep.
Okay.
But this one, when I first joined the board, this was the one that if you needed it, you needed it. But now it's, it sounds obsolete.
When they did the upgrades up on the boulevard, the pressure on the boulevard is higher than the pressure coming in from colony.
So it actually.
How about Albany? How about Albany?
That's been severed.
Years ago, because I think the cost was so high.
Wasn't Albany's water rate ridiculous?
Yeah, that's what it was, the bulk water rate.
We're talking millions of dollars here, folks.
Yeah.
Not cheap.
But it, but it has to get done.
Do a resolution because it can't go cheap.
Right, well, and as we learned, you know, when we redid the sewer main to the, to the county, like this can't fail. You know, this, this, we're talking about leaking water, what if this system were to fail?
Exactly.
It can't fail.
I mean, the fact that you have this kind of seepage now, it's an indication that something is happening.
Yes, major.
Major.
Yeah, because we're also not talking, you know, a little puddle right here.
No, we're talking about intrusive saturation.
Yeah, so when does Eric get back?
15th maybe or 14th.
Can we put on the agenda for the 18th meeting to get a comprehensive analysis as to where we stand?
Has your, has your engineer done any wells, the test water levels?
Yes.
Yeah, is he finding saving water?
Yes.
Yes.
In trouble.
Yeah. So, yeah, let's get, uh, I know he'll just be back from vacation, but at least he can advise us on, um, next step and who does the next step.
Good to know.
Awesome, thank you, Dan. Um, good.
That's all I got.
But?
That's all I got.
Okay, um, I have one, uh, quick announcement. Um, I, as of 2:50, 2:25 today, the next Storywalk book has been installed on the Storywalk. It is Couch Potato. Uh, so that should be, it looks like a great book, so I encourage people to go. Bring kids, bring grandkids. Uh, looks, looks like a good one, and it should be publicized by the schools starting tomorrow. And we'll get that in the Manans activities as well. Um, Brian?
Yeah. Uh, the Albany County Redistricting Committee, uh, is taking public comments about the redistricting. Um, instead of dividing Manans into two different districts, now they're proposing to divide us into three different.
Oh, my God, I thought it was gonna be, I thought you said news that ever.
They literally did the opposite of our comments that we submitted previously.
So what I would like to do is draft a very simple letter, um, basically, uh, with the board agreeing unanimously to keep Manans whole, which was the, basically, the tagline I used in the initial letter that I wrote. Um, and others had picked it up and, and basically submitted the same comment, but basically to, to, the goal would be to, uh, to keep Manans whole. And obviously, if, if they must divide us into two different districts, it's my personal, huh?
Or three.
It's my personal opinion that we have more in common with the Loudonville district than we do with the North Albany district.
Yes.
Right, yeah, we, yeah.
That, that, there, they would be crossing over a municipal line, whereas at least if we, if we.
We're part of the town.
Part of the territory, so to try to keep that, that, at, you know, if we escape, bruised.
The only village that's not being. Yeah, where the only village is not being, uh, retained within one district.
So I will send a draft around. It's due by August 4th, I'll let everybody read it. Um, and then I'll include it with the 18th minutes, if that's cool.
That's fine.
And then I'll make sure that it gets submitted on.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you for doing that, Brian. Anything else?
I do have a legal matter and a personal matter for executive.
Okay, uh, Tim, do you have anything?